Whether I agree with you or disagree with you, that has nothing to do with my appreciation for the amount of time we've taken listening to the constituents, being out there and just putting forth all that huge amount of effort. You guys sacrificed, your families sacrificed, your friends sacrificed, the time that you took to be here to make very difficult decisions on behalf of the community. So, thank you very much for your time and your effort.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to comment?
Cindy Banner, 507 Screen Street. So, I would like to thank all of you for serving, and the time commitment is unbelievable. I come to a lot of meetings, most, and what you put into this isn't anywhere commensurate with the pay. I sit on the compensation committee, and if we as a group could offer more to you, it would be well warranted. So, the number of hours that you put in and the decisions that you have to make, and I can see that you pour your hearts and souls into it to make sure that you represent constituents in this community well. So, I can't thank you enough for doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to comment before it's closed? Public comment? All right, it's not a closed public comment at this time. We're going to transition into agenda item number four. Sam Demel is currently attending. He's on Zoom. Sam, I just want to check to make sure that there's no technology glitches, that you can hear us and that we can hear you just fine.
I can hear you just fine.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. The honor to be here today. It's great to see such a great crowd up here, too.
Yeah, yeah, we got a, we got a crowd today for sure. So, moving through agenda item number four, I'm just pulling up this email, bear with me. So, I've had some personal things pop up today. So, essentially, at the last city commission meeting, the city commission authorized the motion for the city attorney to work through negotiations with Sam Demel. They went through those negotiations, the parameters were set by the city commission. Sam, are you, do you have anything that you want to say or start off with before we get through kind of deliberating on what your terms of that, what your terms are that you came back to the commission are with the city attorney? And we'll kind of get the thoughts on the city commission on those terms, and then move forward from there with a discussion.
I've been in contact with Commissioner Moody and with the mayor also, trying to help find housing. It's just a very difficult situation to find out, but housing needs to be a challenge that needs to be addressed as soon as possible also. So, that's, that's going to be a challenge, but, you know, we're, we're really excited about the possibilities.
Yep. Yeah, I appreciate that, Sam. Just so I can give you an answer right now, I did reach out to that individual with the rental that me and you discussed yesterday on the phone. Unfortunately, they already have several bookings throughout this winter already tied to the ski resort there, so they don't have any availability. But I will continue, and I know Commissioner Moody will continue to do his best in trying to find you some type of temporary rental unit. If anyone else in the public is aware, kind of the parameters, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sam, but three bedroom, two and a half bath, looking for something that you can get into on like a seasonal basis, if there's anyone that does short-term rentals throughout the summer that has slow occupancy during the winter, there could be a great opportunity for Sam to lock that down for a couple of months throughout this winter. That would allow him and his family an opportunity to look for permanent housing. So, just putting that information out there. Put it in the press. Anything else with those parameters accurate, Sam?
Yes.
Okay.
I have two grown-up daughters who would like to have room for them to come visit, and we, we currently have a very large grid for me and a very small toy poodle. So, in the backyard, we'd be appreciative because the grid for me is outside all the time.
Yep, okay. And then, Sam, I did share, I reached out to John Matthews yesterday, had a conversation with him. He's more than open and willing to, you know, connect with you, share, you know, where he's at, things that he's working on, some obstacles and/or challenges and/or opportunities that he's identified within the time that he's been here. So, you two should have each other's contact information. Hopefully, that connection happens. I connected with Commissioner-elect Hauser and provided your contact information with her today. She said she's going to reach out to the other Commissioner-elect and share your contact information with them, so hopefully you have an opportunity to connect with those three Commissioner-elect. With that, yeah, go ahead.
Jessica did provide that information to them. She requested approval, and I already talked to Rebecca.
Perfect, awesome, okay. So, with that, we'll get into kind of what popped up throughout the negotiation terms between you and the city attorney. What popped up, the other revisions, increased notice of non-renewal of the contract and up to $10,000 relocation expenses. So, ultimately, those are terms that we'll discuss right now and deliberate amongst ourselves as a commission, if we're in favor of those additional terms that you, you know, identified with the city attorney, and you filled us in on. And I'll just start us off with, I'm in support of those additional terms. Essentially, it was a three-months notice. You're asking for an additional three months, which would give you a total of six months' notice that the city commission does not want to renew that contract. I think six-month notice is fair, and I can support that. And also relocating several times throughout my, my personal career, $10,000 is very in line with what I've, you know, experienced throughout my personal transitions. So, that's something else that I think is important, with being supportive today, moving forward with those terms. So, who would like to go next on if they would support those terms or not?
Yeah, I agree. Thanks for the clarification, Sam. I don't have a problem with six months. Everything, everything that was in the contract was what was presented before, with the exception of the relocation expense, and, and we live within the parameters of what was posted for the job and everything like that. So, I deny a problem with parameters, and look, look forward to Kevin, Kevin, you come on board and take head of the ship.
Thank you.
Hi, Sam. As far as the increased notice, I think you're okay with that. I thought personally, three months was reasonable, that the majority can follow. You, originally, when you interviewed, then we asked what your current salary or former salary was, was at 131, and you had applied previously at 131. Yes, we did come back up, and you didn't make that, that pull. But, and we did increase the range to 150, so you hit it in the middle. I'd be happy with 135, but that's just the negotiator in me. The moving expense, I totally understand. I do. I've only ever professionally been moved once, and that was a number of years ago. So, I gotta believe this is a reasonable expense. What, when you haven't talked about, maybe this is a deviation, and do you want to do deal with later, and then is start date?
I do have it on my note, just I do want to, at some point, us go through that process, and you can kick us off.
I'm going to kick it off, because I'm only hearing about this kind of, I think it's like December 1st or 2nd is what I'm hearing. Is that true?
That's, that's what was on the proposed contracts, yes.
Okay. It would be lovely if that could be sooner, and I understand that one of the, you know, as you talk about the housing, hey, we'd love to have you immediately onboard as soon as possible, but also, it's going to take being here to act like Tom or Tim taught, to be able to respond and get a feel for the community and maybe how far out you may want to reach if your price points are there. So, I would love to see you come onboard sooner, recognizing that when you do find a place and you make the big move, you're going to need some time off to do that, and I understand that. So, the question I guess I have is, is there any negotiability on December 1?
No. I like the idea of coming on and then getting established, finding something, and then maybe, you know, taking two weeks off and getting everybody moved out. That seems to figure reality a little bit more better anyway. So, I can propose that and look at that and talk to the family. We'll just have to find, you know, someplace where I can stay for two weeks or whatever and just come up and.
December 1 is the day. If it's December 1 or 2, that's fine. I don't want to stay in the way of, I'm just curious.
I will pay with moving in forward or, or backwards, whatever we need to do to make work.
Thank you. Well, I got you.
May I refer to another listener?
Hi, Sam. Mayor Proton, last here. I'm not sure if I'm looking at you the right way or not, but.
I can see you now.
You go like here. I'll look there. Okay. That's just weird. So anyways, yeah, I apologize, I missed the, your interviews. Work drove me away, wasn't able to get away from work for that, but it's nice to meet you and looking forward to meeting in person. My term expires here in about five days or something, so, but I'm sure I'll meet you around town. Yep, again, I, I agree with everything that's been said. I think December 1 is reasonable start date, considering the hurdles you got to jump through to get here and to find a place, even temporary place. And I'll have some Peter's out there for you, too, so I can help you find something. And I, I don't have any problem with salary or the, the moving stipend, I think that's reasonable also, so I'm in full support.
Thank you, and thanks for doing that outreach.
Commissioner, go ahead.
The, I have no problems with the detail that you've asked for. Bob Farrell, by the way. Relocation expense, I had asked to put that as part of the package, knowing that we would likely have to bring somebody home, but everything's negotiable, they tell me. So, I have no problems with the change in the notice of non-renewal or the salary. Start date, I think is great to get you in here before the winter season and right before budget. I know that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Because it's a joint budget.
Well, I'm glad you do. It's rather painful for those of us, so, okay.
All right. With that being said, it. I would take the floor. Adrian, mayor.
With that being said, I, I would love to make a motion to approve the hire end of Sam Demel as a city manager for the city of Boeing City effective December 1, 2025, under the terms and condition outlined in the city manager employment contract and authorize the city clerk and/or treasurer to execute the contract on behalf of the city. As well with the motion, and to terminate the interim city manager employment agreement without cause pursuant to section 5A of that agreement effective immediately with the same interim, interim city manager to receive pay and benefits for the required 10 days, business days that we notice period, but not to perform further work duties or report to order during that same time, just to give us a clean slate.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Sam.
Can we state some flexibility with the target date of December 1 for the start? It might be possible that find some place we can even start a little bit sooner.
Sure.
And then take the time off, but just have some flexibility in that start date, target date.
I would friendly edit that to effective December 1 or sooner.
Okay.
If time allows.
Okay, thank you, Sam. So, there's a motion on the floor. There's a support. Is there further discussion? Roll call please, Jessica.
I would like to, because the addition of the other change in terms of the immediate termination of the existing contract does not allow any handover of projects or activities to Sam from, from our current, from the interim.
From my understanding, would, he wouldn't be here as, as effectively immediately according to the motion. I think that's an opportunity that can be discussed between Sam and John.
So, the interim manager, city manager would depart today?
The way I, the way I see it.
Starting in December.
Yeah. And mainly, you know, support for that is basically, you're staring at John's biggest supporter from the beginning, but with all the consternation that's happened over the last couple of months and everything, I think this is the best way for Boeing City to turn to complete page and just start, and, you know, gentlemen, more than qualified, moving in, and it waves the clean, clean, slate clean for three incumbents, and I think it, I think it helps Boeing City just move forward, and we have no, no issues going forward. Again, John's, you know, worked well with them, was one of his biggest supporters, couldn't come to terms, there was, couldn't, couldn't even get to the negotiating table, so completely. You know, we have, we have a very qualified city manager that's been in government and can hit the ground running.
Won't be here until December 1.
Won't be here until December 1, first, but, but we went for three months. We have more qualified staff in this city. We have, you know, chief of police that runs a great department, we have clerk treasurer that runs a great department, deputy clerk, we have DPW, we have, we have all, all the pieces in place. And so, it's, you know, this.
The reason I ask, why is that? Because I have, you have a center local activity going on that is currently active?
Yep.
That is in the process of being resolved, and I can't do that if he's not here, and I don't have the, we have the better information.
I do know that, I think the township trustees sent a certified letter saying that they wanted to wait until post-election and once a permanent city manager was hired, so I think that would fit with the letter that you guys sent and indicating a hit and pause on all those conversations, and from my understanding, that's why.
There has not been a pause, there has been activity to resolve the interlocal agreement, and I would like the opportunity to point that.
So, the letter that I'm indicating, does it exist or does it not exist?
I see.
Yes, please.
Yeah, we've been meeting, and we are very interested in participating in the direct interlocal agreement as soon as possible.
Okay.
So.
Was it in the Boeing Citizen that I read?
Probably said that to him.
Okay.
But.
Because you are a township trustee.
Yes.
And were you part of that letter that was submitted to the city of Boeing?
All, all the, all the townships were.
Okay.
There's eight of us.
So, I'm not making it up, but the narrative in that letter was basically, your desire wishes as a township trustee was to hit pause until there was a permanent city manager hired, correct?
And, and after the election.
Okay.
But I think I'm speaking for all the townships, we'd like to proceed with the updated agreement ASAP.
And I know that interim agreement, from my conversation with John, has been received, I have not seen it yet, but I would like the opportunity to work with him to get that resolved as soon as possible.
We're anxious about it.
And I know the townships are interested, make sure that the services can be.
Yes, and we want to pay our fair share and all that, so.
Right, right. And, and I, I think it's very valuable for the full context, you know, there's always multiple sides to the story, right? And I think what you're communicating right now is a desire and interest in being able to execute that over the next three months or the next three weeks has been an opportunity to, an opportunity with even John over the last three months, but you literally are on record indicating, we do not want to pursue that over the last three months. You wanted to hit pause, and so that's a very, very important part of the conversation.
It's like our top priority.
Right, right, okay.
I would also like to ask Sam, in terms of the transition, what he desires and what type of contact would be best for him for the end of these second projects?
Yeah, I think it's fair. And Sam, I'll, I'll give you the floor, but before I give you the floor, I want to continue with further discussion on the motion, the support that's out there.
I have a question.
Yeah, I know public comment's not open, I just allowed her because she's a township trustee that has sent a certified letter to the city of Boeing City directly correlating with the point brought up by Commissioner Farrell. So, after we get done through the further discussion on the motion and the support that's on the floor, I'll give an opportunity for public comment, but I'm not going to allow public to interject at this point in time.
If you're allowing the board to discuss the public, should be allowed to discuss.
I just communicated to you what I'm going to allow. You can throw it, I mean, it is what it is at this point in time. I'm not doing anything that I haven't done over the last four years, I'm being consistent to what I've done for the last four years and what I watched happen for two years prior to that, so. I didn't want to go down the route, but it needs to be said again, important parts of the conversation being out there. I received an email at 10:09 a.m., six hours ago. The email is from staff members from the city, and I'm going to do my best, because this is where I have to thread a needle. I'm not going to throw people under the bus, but full context needs to be part of the deliberation, so everyone in the room has an understanding. So, when you're reading anonymous posts on social media and reading context in the press, hopefully everyone in the room understands what's going on. So, six hours ago at 10:09 a.m., I received an email from staff members from the city of Boeing City. The email reads, commissioners, we wanted to share that as a collaborative team, we have communicated our support to the commissioners-elect for moving forward with Sam Demel as a candidate. We felt it was important that they are aware of our shared perspective for today's discussion. Thank you. And then moving down through this email string, it's basically an email from that same staff member that was sent out on November 5th, Wednesday, which would have been yesterday at 4:32 p.m., and this email is indicating that it went to the three commissioner-elect that are currently present in their room right now, and I'll read through this email. Dear commissioners, commissioners-elect, as members of the city administrative staff, we wanted to take a moment to share our collective perspective regarding the city manager candidate under consideration at Thursday's special meeting. We are in favor of moving forward with the hiring of Sam Demel with his extensive municipal experience and demonstrated leadership style aligned with the professional and forward-thinking direction that Boeing City needs. After my personal involvement in reviewing all viable candidates who were in the running, Sam clearly stands out as the best choice to lead our organization. Our team believes that his positive attitude, collaborative approach, and understanding of local government operations will bring great benefit to both Boeing City staff and the community as a whole. We're confident that his onboarding time alongside your start as new commissioners will create an opportunity to build a strong unified direction for the city's future. Please know that this message is not intended to represent any individual staff member's position, but rather the shared sentiment of the administration team in support of what we believe is best for Boeing City. Thank you for your time and commitment to serving the community. So, this email prompted me to reach out to one commissioner-elect, and that's Commissioner-elect Hauser. She's the only individual that I have contact information. So, I reached out with, to her today, had a conversation with her, was very candid, transparent, and open, basically talking through the email that I was forwarded, that I knew that they were, they received. Had a conversation with her. She did indicate, the terminology that was used was body language, which is something that you really have to tune into as a leader, and that leads into the next part of the conversation that I had with multiple staff members today, and what was asked from me to these staff members was, do you as a staff member for the city of Boeing City feel it would be better to keep John on the next couple of weeks until Sam arrives? And/or do you think it would be more helpful to you and your team if today was John's last day? Multiple staff members indicated to me that if today was John's last day, that that would be most helpful to them and their operation. So, I'm sitting here as a leader that was just informed by city staff members of that. Do I take that into consideration, or do I not take that into consideration? I'm going to take it into consideration. Above all the rhetoric and all the anonymous, anonymous posts that you're going to see out on social media, all the misconstrued contexts that I know I'll be reading tomorrow at some point, probably tonight at some point in time, if I get on my social media, the reality is, is it's a, it's a very complex scenario, complex situation. With the information that I have in front of me, I think the motion that was made was the most appropriate motion. One, for the individual that's coming to our community to serve in that role as the permanent city manager. Two, for our staff members that I reached out to and inquired with today. And three, the community, because if we don't have staff that feel that they're being supported and being put into a position that best helps them, then I feel like that their services to the community are going to lack, so that's part of my decision-making process. Go ahead.
You could look at this multiple A's. I don't want to minimize at all the, the human resource aspect of this and the message that we have there. I would also suggest that there's been a huge mandate, there are three people that are coming onboard that are new in many, many respects, and bringing you up to speed is what would be a focus, I know for Bob and I vote. Sam needs to come up to speed as well on where things are. I'd also make a sidebar statement saying, in countless times in my life, I went into a position with no transition at all, particularly at the senior level. Nevertheless, I feel like the opportunity for everyone to come up to speed at the same time is, is, is a useful thing. We will probably, you will probably, find ways that you want to capture and identify all the open issues and the matters that are out there, and we collectively can help with that. And I, and I, so I see real value in that. Sam actually talked about something in his interview that I, I thought about before, and we actually did it, is a board meeting of all the advisory boards, and that would be, you said, a visioning session. And that I see is probably the first order of priority for the new commission to come together, to collaborate, and to hear from you, probably the first time, the very specific things. And I say you, I mean, I'm speaking to you as individuals, because you are each individual. You know, you have kind of elected this block, and I totally respect that each of you are individuals, just as we are each individuals, you're not marginal or anything. So, I think the whole community is waiting to hear your specific visions and the path that you want, your first three priorities, whatever they may be, and the path that you want to take. And I can't think of any better way to do it than a visioning session where everybody's together at the same time. We have the current heads that can help carry. These guys did a fabulous job for 90 days when we were without whatsoever. So, there's a lot of, to me, good reasons to do this.
Yeah, I'll just add, and then I'll ask if any other commissioner has anything for discussion of the motion that's supported on the floor right now, but my interactions with John have been nothing but positive since he's been here. By no means does this mean to reflect on the poor performance from John at all. This again is threading a very thin loop-hole needle. The conversations that I've had with John, he said that he is willing to be here up until he's needed. Us five leaders up here have information from. Us five leaders up here have information from staff, um, from multiple sources that, uh, what would be best for them in decisions, tonight's decision-making process. So I appreciate everything that John's done. He's been invaluable. There was a gap of three months with no city manager during the budget session timeframe, during the much busier operational structure, getting ready for a summer throughout the spring memorial. So does the staff have the capacity? Absolutely, it's a demonstrated capacity. Do they have the ability? Absolutely, it's a demonstrated ability. I, I think that, um, I'm gonna honor what the staff have communicated to me today, that's for sure. So, um, any, anyone else have anything for further discussion?
We got Sam.
Yeah, go ahead, Sam.
So I, I like to have great information before I'm making a decision or anything like that. Uh, I think it's valuable for me to, you know, listen to the staff. I'm always gonna listen to the staff together, but, uh, with the new three new commissioners coming in, there are things that can be bought too. I think this would be fine, but there's always an option that if we decide that the best interest is to do, you know, a small mini contract for twenty hours or, you know, whatever it may be, we could do that, uh, in the future as just a subcontracting, uh, or whatever. But I don't have enough information deciding what would be best for me, except for for me to gather the information and really just into the department heads and, and all of the commissioners. And then kind of see where it can get some good hands-on, uh, feel for it and then we can decide what's the best way to move forward.
Sam?
There is a provision in his current contract that provides for that.
Yep, Sam, thank you. Um, that's a very valuable piece to add to the conversation. So you're already demonstrating your skill set, I appreciate that. So basically what was just communicated is if and when there's an opportunity and if John is willing to, um, Sam can have a training, you know, an overlap succession planning meeting with John. From all the indications I've had from John, I'm sure he'd be willing to do that. John, you want an opportunity right now to elaborate if you'd be willing to do that in the future?
Yeah, committed to the residences, committed to do whatever I can, we insist. I'm sitting here shocked.
Thank you, John. Anyone else have anything to further discuss? All right, roll call please, Jessica.
Morning.
Aye.
Pritchard.
Aye.
Lassiter.
Aye.
Nenek.
Aye.
Farrell.
Say aye.
The motion's here.
All righty. All righty, um, I'll open the floor back up for public comment. This is something that, again, is not consistent, hasn't been done. But if you'd like to make public comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Bridgette Folds, one thousand seven hundred Street. As I was campaigning for the position of Boyd City Commission, I knocked on hundreds of doors. And, um, one conversation with a very civically engaged citizen stands out. She said to me, Bridgette, I went to the candidate forum and I heard you say over and over again how we needed a permanent city manager, that that would be top of the list. But I'm concerned that if you're elected, you're going to rush this process. I don't want you to rush this process. This is a very important decision. The city manager executes the vision and plans put forth by the commission, which are informed by the citizens of Boyd City. It's essential that this person has the skillset and temperament to work well with the commission, city staff, and the community. Citizens have spoken at the previous meetings suggesting that the newly elected commission be tasked with hiring of a new city manager. It seems like common sense, but this commission decided otherwise. While I agree that finding a city manager is a top priority, I object to the approach. This commission is taken. Exactly how does rushing this process serve the people of Boyd City? I read Mr. Demel's resume and I watched his interview. And my first impression of him is good. But I have my own questions, questions that were not asked at this interview, questions that I think are important and relevant to Boyd City in this moment. Mr. Demel cited in his cover letter, a changeover in the city commission in his former city manager role was a major factor ultimately for his departure. And here we are with a new city commission in just a week. I imagine Mr. Demel would like to get to know the newly elected commissioners prior to signing on based on his previous experience. And I did receive that email that Jessica sent earlier today and I appreciate that. Your input is very important. My fear is that Mr. and Mrs. Demel will relocate to our town and find that it is not for them, not what they thought, not aligned with their personal values, or whatever. And then we must start over again. That's my fear. That said, I'm for giving this more time. I would like to have a conversation with Mr. Demel. I want to get this right for Boyd City. Good year.
Anyone else have anything for public comment?
City Baner five one seven Street three. I want to say thank you and I'm excited to have somebody new coming on. I think that this commission has done an excellent job. This has been a lengthy, lengthy process. And I know when commissioners came on, there was not somebody in place and they didn't have a say in who was going to be city manager. So I commend you from every end because you continued the process from right when it started. And it was a long process when the city manager position changed and you stayed on it. There was fortitude that you kept going to pick the best person for this community. And it wasn't taken lightly. And that's why the process took so long, is because of the concern of the individual you wanted. And we found that individual today. And I commend you for doing that. And I want to thank you, and I want to thank you, Sam, for recognizing this community and for what it is. Cause I think you'll be happy that you're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? So there's your example, folks. I'm unclosed public comment at this point in time. Do the other two commissioner elects wanna go on record, state anything during public comment? Okay, unclosed public comment, but back to the statement of there you go. There's two individuals that just got up during public comment. One states that's a rushed process. One appreciates the hard work and time to that process. Um, at the last meeting, and I know Commissioner Pritchard's digging for her metrics and numbers cause numbers don't really lie, they really show true narrative and context. I'll pull up a memo that I read at the last meeting just to give the numbers, the data is important. So one narrative is the rushed process. One narrative is a thank you for your hard work through the process. The numbers are this, transparency and public engagement. Contrary to false claims made online, this process has provided ample opportunity for public participation in comments. Since March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, the Boyd City Commission has done the following. Conducted a total of thirty-two public meetings, each allowing public comment on any topic, including the city manager hiring process. Scheduled the city manager position as an agenda item on nineteen of those meetings, specifically inviting public input and discussion. Deliberated on twenty-one separate agenda topics related to the city manager position across those nineteen meetings, again, giving another twenty-one opportunities to the public to provide input. Scheduled twelve interviews, uh, to date, um, at, that was at this point in time. Now it's up to fifteen interviews, um, to date. Interviewed a total of eight separate candidates to date. That was at the last meeting. You have to include three additional candidates to that. So it would be nine, ten, eleven candidates in total. Scrolling down, conducted a total of ten interviews at that point with a total of thirteen to date, with two candidates being repeated interviews. So the total overall had was, uh, fourteen candidates being interviewed. So there it is, folks, two different narratives. There's the numbers, it can correlate to what true reality is or isn't. If it was a rushed process or a lengthy process. Anyone else have anything before I make a motion adjourned?
No, just my data.
Yeah, yeah.
All I just want to say, this is just a higher data point, is that from March of last year, we got a chance to see, we, there were forty-two candidates over time between what we interviewed for interim, between when we got permanent round one and we offered it out. And I was so excited and that for personal reasons she withdrew. There was another eighteen and this last one, number nine. So we, we didn't rush the process. We made offers along the way. And I would like to remind the candidates specifically that in the September twenty-ninth forum, all we heard was we were moving past them. So, um, I, I would say to Tim's point, the data's there, the facts are there. Whether it's about the hiring of the city manager and any number of other things that are being bandied about in the community, all the stuff is foible. There is foible stuff. If you don't show up physically to hear it, then there's if you really wanna know the facts, then FOIA it. And then draw your own conclusions or go back and review the videos. So that's my comment. I just, I'm so tired of pulling arrows out of my back about wrong intentions. It's not funny. So if you haven't read Kim Mettler's post on what's happening, she captured it all in a nutshell. And I've been agreeing with her more. Thank you.
All right, anyone else have anything?
Just so you're excited to welcome Sam.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Sam, I appreciate it. Looking forward to meeting you here in the community. I think you and your wife are gonna love it and you're not gonna wanna go anywhere else.
I'm a very honest person. I find the value of meeting everywhere, but, uh, Boyd City has more of an abundance of that. And, and I, I did hear a lot of research and, and other videos within the community. And I believe that the whole community is very interested in what's best for the community and willing to work with anybody. And that came across strong. So that was a driving force that, hey, it doesn't matter, you know, different views, we're willing to disagree on things. But once we set that vision of what we're trying to accomplish, we can all get to work to accomplish that vision. So that's what I gathered and what was impressive to me.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you, congrats, Sam. All right, for that, I'll make a motion adjourned.
Four.
All right, all, can you say aye?
Aye.
I'll post say nay.